Tick, 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 tick.
Ross from Friends.
All right. Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the December 2nd, 2025 Regular City Commission Meeting for the City of Deerfield Beach. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Hudak.
Here.
Commissioner Plout.
Here.
Commissioner Shinetzky.
Here.
Vice Mayor Preston.
Here.
Mayor Droski.
Here. If everyone would please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, to be led to us tonight by Commissioner Hudak.
I am the United States of America and the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
First, we have approval of our City Commission Meeting Minutes from November 4th, 2025.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Commissioner Plout, seconded by Commissioner Hudak. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Let the record show unanimous consent. Next, we have acknowledgement of our City Board Minutes from the Non-Uniformed Employees Retirement Plan Meeting Minutes of August 11, 2025, the Education Advisory Board of August, excuse me, September 3rd, 2025, the Charter Review Board Meeting Minutes from October 10, excuse me, October 16, 2025, and October 27, 2025, the African-American Heritage Board Meeting Minutes of October 9, 2025, the Hillsborough Inlet District Meeting Minutes of October 13, 2025, and the Community Appearance Board Meeting Minutes of October 8, 2025, and October 22, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Hudak, seconded by Vice Mayor Preston. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Again, let the record show unanimous consent. Before we get into the approval of the agenda, there is an add-on this evening, gentlemen. We do have a presentation update for the Southeast 8th Avenue Stormwater Improvement Project. So if we could make that 1B and make 1A, the one that we have now, which is the presentation by our, our fine representative, Richard Walzer, is 1A, and then the Southeast 8th Avenue project is 1B, and the rest of the agenda would stay the same.
Motion to approve amended agenda.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended by Commissioner Hudak, seconded by Commissioner Plout. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Let the record show unanimous consent. And now, Madam Clerk, please.
For those attending via Zoom online wishing to speak under public comment or on an item that's open for public input, please click raise hand at the bottom under the reactions tab, and your audio will be unmuted when you are recognized by Mayor Droski. For those attending via Zoom by telephone, please press star nine to raise your hand, and your audio will be unmuted when you are recognized by Mayor Droski. Please make sure your audio is unmuted on your end by pressing star six. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. City Attorney, item 1A.
Item 1A is a presentation of ceremonial checks by Richard Walzer, Florida Inland Navigation District Commissioner to the City of Deerfield Beach for the Sawgrass to Seagrass Center project, and Broward County for the Deerfield Island Park Enhancements project.
Welcome, Commissioner.
Mayor, Commissioners, Vice Mayor, thank you. Appreciate the time. My name is Richard Walzer. I'm the Broward County Commissioner for the Florida Inland Navigation District, appointed by the Governor. First thing I want to do is thank my wife, Brooke, for being here without our support. I wouldn't be able to do what I do. I really appreciate the effort of Dan West, who is the Parks and Recreation for Broward County, and he's a lot of help in helping you, your, your city, helping me approve a $1,229,800 checks for what we're going to be doing for Deerfield Beach. So I don't know if you guys know what the Florida Inland Navigation District is, but it's a special taxing district by the Florida Legislature. Everybody has a millage rate on their tax bill. That tax bill, based on that millage rate, you put a certain amount of money towards it based on the value of your property, and those taxes go towards the Florida Inland Navigation, keeping the channel depth at 15 feet, which is national security, and also helping with seawalls, bridges, and also we write grants for law enforcement, very important to the state. We buy boats, we buy boat ramps for the police, help with also the fire department if they need something, and also for any type of special projects for the municipalities and the counties. So it's my job to fight for that money in Tallahassee for Broward County and be able to do these special projects for, for, for your city.
So we, we welcome you here tonight. We will gladly accept the money. But for those of you that have not had the privilege of meeting Commissioner Walzer yet, he has been a great addition to the Florida Inland Navigation Board so far. I mean, he's been a great fighter for not just Broward County, but Deerfield Beach in particular. I've had the opportunity to meet him a couple opportunities before tonight. He's not only a great person, but a great fighter for, for Deerfield Beach. So we are very happy to see you tonight, not just because you're bringing money, but because of the great work that you're going to continue to do. So thank you for being here tonight. Do you have a a ceremonial check or something you'd like to send or a real one would be better?
If the mayor and the commissioners would like to come up front, I actually have multiple checks, which add up to the, the almost 1.3 million dollars. So if you guys want to come up, we can take a picture.
Absolutely. Captain, Hofstein, could you make sure that those checks get returned before my colleagues leave?
Wasn't it the OJs that did the song Money, Money, Money?
Mr. West, would you like to say a few words, please?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I would like to also acknowledge our fine Commissioner for Broward County. He's, as you said, he's done a lot of work in a lot of different areas, but he's undoubtedly helped support boating, recreation, community engagement with us being together, and more importantly, the educational aspect, which the environmental education aspect of Deerfield Island and Sullivan Park is going to be tremendous, as you've already initiated. And I also would like to thank the Commissioners for their vision and the city leadership for all they've done. You, what you've created here together collaboratively is amazing. And there's not many cities I can say that about, that what you've done to create this kind of synergy among many, many different people, many different partners, is going to be a legacy that we're all going to be very proud of in years to come. So I just can't thank you enough for that. The different organizations. I also would like to just a special recognition to our residents in Deerfield Beach, but also our friends of Deerfield Beach or Deerfield Island Park. They've been amazing for over a decade, about 12, 13 years now. They've worked tirelessly to really help the community and make that island a very, very special place. There's nothing like it anywhere in Broward County. So I want to thank them as well, and I wouldn't say it yet. So thank you for your interest.
Thank you for the friends of Deerfield Island.
And speaking on this, besides what you're doing at the park, the Sullivan Park, and it's going to be amazing, and I think everybody knows that, where this will help us, the find, especially Richard Walzer, and what he's done, will help us make the last three components of that park very special. The one is the Marina Basin for the small boaters, because we built the bigger one through fine money and Broward County match grants. The second is the Environmental Education Center, which they also helped us with that. That's going to be something that we're going to be building in the future. And the third component is right away an outdoor classroom facility. So we can get that up and running at the beginning and then build the classroom, I should say, the Environmental Education Center, which will link to your center on the mainland. So we, we are looking for some very big things, and we've just completed the trail work and all the other components. I invite anyone out to see it. I know our city managers come out to see it and others, and we invite you out to come out to see the rest of it. So thank you very much. That's all I've got, and thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. You have not been to Deerfield Island off the Sullivan Park. I highly suggest that you do so now that hurricane season is over. There's no better time to do it, and I would just make sure that Commissioner Walzer and Mr. West, that you come to the grand opening of our Sawgrass to Seagrass Center later. Just happy to have you, yes.
One last thing, absolutely. And there is more money to come from Find next year with Dan, so whatever's needed to fill in to get all of it done, I'm going to make sure it's going to happen.
Okay, this.
Thank you.
Thank goodness these meetings are recorded. We got you, so. Thank you very much. If you're, you're more than welcome to stick around for our meeting. If not, we appreciate you coming up and, and bringing money with you this evening. Thank you so much. Mr. City Attorney, item 1B.
Item 1P is a presentation regarding the After Action Engineering Report.
We'll just wait 10 seconds for everyone to, those that want to leave can.
I won't be offended.
Five more seconds. Okay, Ms. Power, you should be good to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Power, WCA Manager, City of Deerfield Beach. Tonight, I'm here to talk about a report that was provided to the city from an agency called Chenmore. Normally, when I give presentations, I sort of talk and have images on screen. I don't always read to the screen, but tonight I'm just spend a little bit of time going through each slide and actually reading the slides and just allowing for some of the information to digest. So what happened, of course, as we all know, is that there was a flooding event on, on October 26th, and the city manager requested that there be a third-party evaluation of the recent drainage project that occurred along the 8th Avenue area, and that we also evaluate other planning projects that the city has done over the last 20 years. And so we, we, we wanted to select an engineering firm that we have not worked with in, in the recent past, someone that we don't have any real ties to that can give essentially a, an unbiased opinion. So we did select Chenmore Associates to do this report, and they provided that report to us. And so essentially what we gave to them to create the report was all the available information we had related to the flooding within the area, all the planning project design reports, drainage calcs, permit documents for recently completed Southeast 8th Avenue improvements, identifying potential deficiencies in the area, identifying potential modifications of the recently completed area, and then additional reports like the 2005 study that was done for this area, the actual stormwater drainage report that created the stormwater master plan. So all of this documentation was provided to Chenmore. And I, I'm sorry. We, we do have this available on our website tonight. I'll, I'll get to that in just a little bit. So kind of going back to some of the things that we, I know we're, we're already aware of, but the key which I identified was the low topography of Southeast 8th Avenue, in some places up to two feet lower than the surrounding areas, the constraints of the, of the actual basin, and that the outfall that this area goes to, to the Hillsbrook and Al being, being relatively far away. The exfiltration trench system, which helps with routine rainfall, but not necessarily flooding or extreme events. The improvements, you know, were shown to reduce the flood duration for the event. The improvements, you know, were shown to reduce the flood duration for the events. There was no standing water. In the past, there have been events where there's been standing water for multiple days. Essentially, the report does show that the standing water didn't occur in this particular situation. So in that way, the improvements were impactful to the area, but not necessarily impactful to the amount of rainfall that occurred over that period of time. And then the alternatives, right? And that's something we'll discuss a little bit later in this presentation, but there are multiple alternatives that can be discussed. Land acquisition to create local stormwater retention, a potential stormwater pump station, deep injection wells, improve outfall and floodproofing of homes. And again, these items are costly and the city must obtain approvals. And we do have concerns that these approvals may not be able to be attained. They are regulated heavily by the county and the state. And there is so much that we are permitted to discharge into the Hillsborough Canal. So again, just more of the background. What these items were, there was a 2004 preliminary report, which actually recommended exploring a stormwater pump station, which was known as alternative two. There was the master plan, which identifies southeast Eighth Avenue as a critical prone flood area. The 2022 and 23 design reports, which adjusted trench locations, added backflow preventers. And then 2025 flood report confirmed improvements, you know, reducing standing water multiple days, but current improvements cannot avoid flooding under extreme storms. So we broke this up into sort of some short term recommendations, some long term recommendations. As far as the short term recommendations go, the project is not finalized. The following still has to occur in order for the city to finalize the project. There must be an as-built survey to verify installation accuracy, perform inspections for construction deficiencies, obtain the engineer of record certification, and the Rona post-construction modeling for October 26th. That's not in the scope for Craig A. Smith, and it's something that the city would look to pursue as a separate cost, essentially to create a modeling to see if there's something that maybe we missed through the modeling that maybe we can improve in the area. Additionally, the city needs to have a better emergency response plan. You know, some of the problems that occurred for that particular night in that particular area is that the city doesn't have the appropriate tools essentially to help in a flood event of that nature. Our vacuum pumps, our mobile vacuum pumps are not going to be effective in moving that water from one area to another. They're designed to take water from a drainage system. They're not designed to take, you know, running water from the streets. As far as, you know, mobile pumps and locations of where that water can go, that needs to be identified because there's no area around the Eighth Avenue area in which we can take water and lead it. So you have a pump system, you have a hose system. That hose has to go somewhere for that water to flow. And there is no locations in that area. So we have to identify potential locations where we could potentially move that water somewhere else in a short term basis. Homes routinely impacted by flooding, you know, must consider floodproofing measures to protect their homes. And then evaluating state and federal funding for resilient infrastructure for impacted residents. I want to just bring this up. This was actually brought to my attention by Commissioner Hudak, and we've done extensive research on this. Unfortunately, this time we can't find any grants from the state or federal level that can assist single family homeowners with floodproofing or even elevating their homes. So we continue to look. Our community services department has actually done an extensive job in this, and we are looking for other grant opportunities to help with maybe some larger projects. But if we do find anything, you know, we'll make that available to the residents. But this time, we don't, we don't have any. We don't have any grant opportunities that may exist. So as far as the long term recommendations, and I say long term, I mean outside of the next six months, not within several years, but what are the long term implications of the project? Essentially is to conduct the phase two analysis of the area. So that would require, again, creating a scope, going out, hiring a consultant to review what would be a long term phase two analysis and what potentially that could be. Just some examples, it could be additional backflow preventers, stormwater injection wells, investigate innovative flood control technologies, evaluate feasibility of stormwater pump station, and evaluate the expansion of the regional drainage improvements. So those are some of the concepts that could be discussed in that phase two scope. And essentially in conclusions to this, you know, I know it's difficult to recognize, you know, the work that was done. I know that it was extremely laborsome for the residents to have dealt with this project for multiple years. But essentially, you know, the project has worked for short term standing floodwater. It is not designed and will not work for heavy flooding. That's not what the intention of the project was. And clearly, that's not the results of the project. So pump stations do remain as a potential solution. They are costly and complex. And our concern is that there are limitations to this. So it's important that we just explain tonight in this meeting that while we want to evaluate this, we want to potentially make this, you know, a solution, that there could potentially be limitations that go beyond the city's control for something like a pump station. And it doesn't guarantee, unfortunately, that flooding of homes won't occur. So even if a pump station is installed, it doesn't mean that we won't have flooding of homes. Essentially, you know, for a pump to work, there needs to be water flowing into that pump to lead elsewhere. And for water to be in that pump, that means there has to be water on the roads and water in the system. And this could be a potentially dangerous situation. We don't want to offer you know, a guarantee that this situation would actually resolve flooding of homes. So really, a multi-pronged approach is recommended for the phase two, and it's just discussed, you know, public input at multiple stages. I know a lot of the people who are here tonight are familiar with the public input that occurred for the first project. I was not the interim director of environmental services at that time. I was not the WCA manager at that time. Something like that will never happen again on my watch. There will be multiple stages of public input from the residents for any consultant who comes forward to work on this project, to listen to the concerns of the residents, to hear what their thoughts are, to investigate and evaluate what they believe are the issues related to the area. So that is first and foremost would be part of this project. Infrastructure upgrades, you know, property level mitigation and floodproofing, new emergency response protocols, innovative technologies, and potential external funding, funding support needs to be part of whatever we can do for the phase two study. And we've taken the report and we've put it on the website. So if you go to the City Deerfield Beach website and just go to departments, environmental services, it's right up top, the southeast Eighth Avenue Stormwater Improvements. You click that link, it's going to take you to a PDF document that is going to show the report. So it's available for anyone to read or to review. And then the only thing I would ask for any resident is that, you know, this is a report and at the end of the report, it does have the information for the engineer, who unfortunately was supposed to be here tonight, but at the very last minute was unable to make it. I would request that questions and concerns come directly to the environmental services department and not to the consultant. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So the report, I just want to make clear, the report that you're referencing that's online is not the five pages that you just went over through with the slides. It's the actual report from the engineer. So and I've seen it. It's a little technical in nature. So I just want to warn, you know, everyone in advance. You may need an engineering degree, but it does go through with great specificity to the, to the issues underlying this project. But as far as, and I'm glad that you said it, that we're going to engage the public and those residents most affected by this project, you know, going, going forward. And so anything that we decide, you know, is going to need that feedback and that community engagement as we go forward. Tonight, obviously, is not that night, but is there a rough guesstimate when we can start engaging the public with the information going forward?
So we wanted to, you know, have this meeting, do the report within the time sensitive frame of when we, when we said we'd have this report done. But what we need to do next is create a scope for the phase two study and, you know, locate a funding source for payment of that study and go through the procurement process of hiring a consultant who can do that.
Okay. Because obviously, you know, this is something that is on, you know, all those residents' minds, and we want to make sure that we don't, you know, let them think that we forgot about them because we certainly haven't, as we continue to go through, you know, all the options and all of the options that you see. I mean, there's a wide array of options that are, that are out there and available. And so we want to make sure that each one of them is, you know, vetted, you know, so that we get the best option for that, that particular area as we go forward. So for those of you that are here tonight, this is a presentation. We are going to let you speak instead of making you wait until the public comment. If anyone wants to speak on this particular item only, we are going to open it up to the public in a minute. But I do want to get through, there's a lot of lights from my colleagues. I want to get through with their questions first. And then we'll take your questions. You'll be limited to three minutes, just like we are on any other item tonight. And then, and then everyone will keep you posted, you know, when we're going to have future meetings to make sure that we get, you know, this address as we go forward. But I'm not sure what the sequence of lights was. We'll just go with Commissioner Hudak. You can go first. It's your district two. Your district as well. It's not district two, it's your district as well.
Awesome. Right. As well. Thank you very much. Thank you for the report, Eric. One of the things that when I looked at the engineering report and the question I had and I posed to staff was, if this project wasn't done, did this project make the flooding worse as been reported? Or did this project actually help? And if it didn't actually have been completed, would the flooding have been worse with the old system? That's my first question.
Right. So the report from Chenmore Associates indicated that the, the the project did help with the alleviation of stormwater once the rain event ended.
Okay. That's what my understanding as well. I just want to make sure, you know, the money might not have been well spent, but at least it wasn't wasted. And then just to reiterate, one of the things that I had asked you about federal funds and state funds for, for individuals to waterproof their homes. Right now, you said that they're, they're not available, but we do have staff looking into every option viscerally that we can for these residents. Can we talk a little bit about you know, preventative measures with regards to, okay, we know a storm is coming. What are some of the things that, that we've just, we've improved upon? And that we are going to improve upon going forward, not just for this neighborhood. Because when it rains, it doesn't just rain on one street, but for the entire city as a whole, because that part was by my failure.
You're going to see some more information from me in the future as far as what on-call staffing is and how we, how we change that process. But additionally, the department needs to go through, you know, exploratory training on what to do in certain events and how we can resolve those events. But regardless of whether this is Eighth Avenue or somewhere else, we don't really have a way to direct stormwater from a flood event and bringing it to somewhere else. So we need to evaluate if those are even concepts that we can do in the city.
I understand that part. But, you know, responsive, when someone calls up and says, my house is flooding, and sorry, that guy is on vacation.
So we've already made several protocol changes to the water plant, which is the after hours call line with correct scripts that they need to be providing and correct contact in which they are reaching out. We have, I would say, restructured the contact tree for how those, those reports are sent. But more does need to be done. And the way in which we need to do that is we need to expand our on-call service, which, which right now is very, very limited.
And sandbags wouldn't have helped this situation. It was bad. But what, you know, we know a storm is coming. What are some of the things that we're going to do?
Well, if you know, if you know a storm is coming, and the city does budget every single year for sandbags. And so if there is a hurricane and we have, you know, the five days prepares you normally might, the city always creates sandbags for residents and creates a sandbag line and advertises those types of things. But sandbags really are a one-time use. They do collect, you know, water. Basically, the bag sort of becomes a concrete, but you don't know what's in that water. That could be dirty water. It could be coming from somewhere else, and you don't want that to remain in your home. You don't want to remain keeping that sandbag. And the sand does need to be, you know, a certain type of sand to, you know, stop staining. It doesn't need to be a white sand. But there, sandbags can only do so much.
Right.
And but, but if we know about an event, we do offer the sandbag program. And that's typically what happens in the course of, say, a hurricane. But in a situation like what happened on the 26th, you know, we had no, no warning for that.
And are there any assets that, that we could look at in purchasing to help move the water from a, from a low lying area?
So that's one of the things we're evaluating is.
Lift station, but I mean, like you said, these trucks or whatever.
Right. So evaluating what we can do as far as equipment is one thing, but it also has to be where are we allowed to displace the water?
Right.
And that's an important situation. So with the city, from a citywide map standpoint, we have to understand that for any location because there are, of course, other locations in the city that are prone to flooding. I mean, first and first over here in the Allwood Homes area is a, is a great example. And we've done several things to improve that area. But at the end of the day, it's still the lowest point of the development and flooding occurs. You know, so it's not just this particular area. There's other places in the city, and we have to have response measures for any of those places.
Thank you. Any further, Commissioner? Commissioner Shinetzki, followed by Vice Mayor Preston.
Thank you. I had spoken to some residents in that affected flood area, and they said recently there'd been some backup sewage issues. Could you address that?
So we have evaluated two sewage issues that were not determined to be part of the cities. And recently, we were informed of one that occurred over the weekend. We didn't actually receive the response to it. There wasn't a request to the city, but we did, we did learn about it. So we did go and do an investigation and TV'd that area and determined that there was not a cause from the city's pipe.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I address the issues with the flooding, we typically don't open a presentation up to the public. My concern, Mayor, is, is that I don't care. I think it's if you want the public to be a part of this, that's fine. But what I don't want is some presentations that the public is not allowed to speak on and then some that are. So if it's going to be our policy that if a presentation is going to be given, the public can have input, I'm okay with that. But I don't think that we should pick and choose. It's one way or the other. The issue, I think your presentation was good. But you know what I didn't hear? I didn't hear a solution. It's not a solution. And what the people in the southwest, southeast Eighth Avenue area, what they experienced was devastating, absolutely devastating. What I saw was just challenging. So you know, if we get a consultant and then another consultant and then another consultant, in the end, what are they going to tell us? They're going to tell us this, you're in a low lying area. They're all going to come back and say the exact same thing at an expense to the city of a lot of money to tell us something that we already know. I have a problem with that. That's one. So anything that we do ought to be able to make sure that the residents of Deerfield Beach in the southeast Eighth Avenue area, in this low lying area, how do we eliminate the problem? And that's going to be difficult. Like you said, that's a difficult process because of the layout when homes were being built. That's a low lying area as it is in my district over by the McKeithen area, John McKeithen Park. So, you know, anything, any money that we spent, it ought to be not to just kind of throw a Band-Aid. It should be to resolve the problem because those, the people in the southeast Eighth Avenue area, the water level in their homes, it just was ridiculous. So how do we fix it? And that's going to be hard. And I just think that, you know, that we need to think radical because water will always seek the lowest level. If you have water running down, if you dig a hole, it'll now find that hole. And that's the problem that we're having there. So, you know, we have to find a way, look at the structure of those homes and then make an area lower than, than those homes. That would alleviate the problem, but that would be radical and, 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 and but we need to think that way. The other thing is that we need to really invite the input of all of the residents over there to be a part of the process so that the, and I like what you said, involving the public, that is important because they have ideas too. And whatever ideas that they have ought to be welcomed by our staff and this commission because they're the ones that really experienced a very devastating situation when, when those rains, even though those rains don't come very often, but when they come, they do a lot of damage. We have to make the area lower than the level of those houses now. That's the only way that's going to happen. And then we need to examine ways that that could happen. And maybe people will like that, maybe they won't. But, but that's what needs to happen. If we could make it lower, the problem would go away. You'd agree or disagree?
I mean, the, the problem could be resolved in having a low lying area for water to flood. I mean, the the problem could be resolved in having a low-lying area for water to fl- flow to. We have to evaluate how the water flows to it to ensure it doesn't impact other homes or where that will be. But yes, obviously, if there's a lower point, the water would flow to that area.
I just hope that we we can do something along that because that because other than that, the consultants are going to tell us something that we already know at what cost? Fifty thousand, sixty thousand, just to come back and say, you're in a low-lying area. It it doesn't help us, I want to hear resolutions. And it's going to be difficult, that's going to be a difficult process because there's a lot of considerations that, uh, that we need to deal with. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Commissioner Shnitzky, do you want to speak again?
Yes, just want to say one.
And then we'll open it to the public.
All right, just one other thing. Again, this rainstorm, it was a once-in-a-generation type of thing, and we brought that out every twenty-five years. So it was, it was exceptional. But when I had contacted our our sister city Boca Raton, one thing that impressed me, they said they had boots on the ground that night, that night, it immediately went to nine-one-one and they had boots on the ground. Staff was out there, um, they were cording off the streets. Is that something that Deerfield Beach could do as well, that if a catastrophe like that happens again, that night, not the morning after, but that night, we could actually have some sort of staff out there assessing and trying to assist in any way?
Yeah, well, I mean, staff was obviously aware of the situation. I mean, I, you know, but what we can do to resolve an issue is localized to Eighth Avenue versus I don't know what Boca Raton is doing. And if they're cording off roads, it's because people are traversing through those roads for flooding. That's not the situation for here. Um, we are not Boca Raton and we are not Palm Beach County, and we are required to follow the rules and regulations of Broward County. And if we're going to look at other cities, there are going to be cities that are in Broward County that follow the same rules and regulations. But as I've already stated in the presentation and I'm and I'm telling all of you tonight, we are evaluating our emergency response and trying to improve that.
Thank you, Mr. Power. We'll go ahead and, uh, any residents tonight that would like to speak on item one B, the presentation, uh, just come forward, state your name and address, please, and you'll have three minutes.
Roger Freitag, four-eighteen Southeast Second Street, Deerfield Beach, Florida. Thank you, good evening. My concern is, and I think, um, Vice Mayor Preston touched on it a little bit. If the city is going to spend residents' money, taxpayer money, let's find a solution. There's always a solution. There is vacant space just south of the Peggy Nolan Aquatic Center, right by the middle school, I believe, there. That land has some trees on it. I don't see why we don't dig a big pit there and allow all the water to be diverted from southeast Eighth and Seventh Avenue and and divert it that way so that the water could accumulate there, could be pumped there, a pumping station could be built. And, I mean, forcing residents to waterproof their homes, I think you're reaching there a little bit, uh, Mr. Power. I mean, it's only getting worse in Florida. I mean, back in the day, if everybody knew that we would have the winds that are being generated by hurricanes, I guarantee you, every single power line would be underground. If you take a look at new construction, all power lines are being put underground. So the question is, is at what point do we decide to spend the money to resolve the issue and find a solution as opposed to, which was said earlier, a Band-Aid and wasting taxpayers' money? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Freitag. Just name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Gillian Lerner, five-hundred Southeast Eight F. Um, honestly, the water did not move. But as he said, it moved, it didn't move. We woke up to water in the house still. So it sat for like four hours, the water, after the fall of the water, it didn't move at all. So that that was completely incorrect, it didn't move. We went through this flood five years ago too, and we were out of our house five years ago with our kids. And it was better five years ago. So I wanted to address that, it was moving five years ago. This time, it didn't move at all. We woke up to walking in water, there was water still in the street, so it didn't move. Okay, um, again, if there was an emergency that happened, well, a neighbor of ours had a fall and there was an emergency, uh, ambulance could not come out to our street. What if there was a real true emergency where someone needed someone ASAP? How is that okay that the city cannot take care of our block and take care of the people that pay their taxes that live on our block? And then if there was a true emergency, someone could just die? I mean, how is that okay? It's not, it's not okay, all right? Um, and the sewage holes that keep popping up in our street, that never happened before the construction. So you can't blame it on sewage, it's something that's after the construction. And then the family that lives near that big drain that supposedly goes into where the water is supposed to go said that the water wasn't moving at all that night. So something is wrong, something you guys did is wrong, not you guys, but it needs to be fixed. We pay our taxes, we can't live like this. What if kids have an emergency, one of the elderly have an emergency, it's on you, it's on the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lerner. Uh, for anyone speaking tonight, that give your contact information to the clerk to my right so that we can reach out and make sure that you're on the email list as we go forward, make sure we have your contact information, please. Mr. Nolan?
Uh, good evening, Thomas Nolan, four-oh-six Southeast Eighth Avenue. Um, happy holidays, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. City Manager. Um, a couple of things that were spoken about, I appreciate the presentation, appreciate appreciate the time the city's putting into this event. Here we are once again, five years later, we're going through it. Um, I think the problem is, we are here, we're trying to fix our homes that were devastated, and we're putting all of this money back into our homes, not knowing if two weeks from now, another rainstorm is going to take it all the way. And I think that's the fear that every single resident has over there. I absolutely disagree disagree with the Assistant City Manager. The last flood and this flood, this one was much worse. And the mere fact that the middle school parking lot is now tied into the Eighth Avenue project, you just said that it was a low-lying area. The one of the fa- first phases when they did Sixth Avenue is they tied the entire drainage system that used to be a local drainage system at the middle school that would never leave, the city workers would have to go over there and pump it out after a major rainstorm, now goes into our drainage system. Where do you think that water goes? The lowest-lying area, southeast Eighth Avenue. If that's not a flaw in the system or a failure of the design, then you guys have a blind guy looking at your plants. So the city needs to figure it out. And if there's nothing else, we don't cap that from filling into Sixth, Seventh and Eighth Avenue to at least buy us some time until the next rainstorm or until we can find money to fix this? Because everybody's talking about this money. This was actually federal cares money that was used for this project. A lot of people don't realize that. This was money we got from the federal government to do this because stormwater, sitting stormwater is considered a hazard to health. That's how we got this money. So it's going to be very hard to find any type of money like this to be able to fix any of this stuff. Dania Beach is in in Broward County, they have pump systems in the low-lying area. Hallendale Beach is in Broward County, they have pumps in low-lying areas. So to say that we can't, we don't think and pumps are going to be the only thing that move this water. If you go over there and you look at this, the check valves do not let the water leave our neighborhood until it reaches, accretes a certain pressure. So in all reality, that water never left our neighborhood because the pump, those those operate on a certain PSI, and until they opened to leave the neighborhood, it stayed in our neighborhood. That's why we didn't see any moving water. At low tide, no moving water. At high tide, when we had five feet of water on the road, that's when the water started to move. So the amount of pressure was required to open that valve to let it leave our neighborhood happened. Those are the things you need to be looking at. I love looking at plans and stuff like that, but you got to look at what actually happened. Where were the failures at? Because if we don't actually look at the actual failures and we just look at a design, we're never going to actually figure out what went wrong. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Anyone else like to speak? Mrs. Bracy, are you stretching or come to speaking?
Stretching, I was sitting way back on my knee. Oh. My name is Willie Rosetta Graham Bracy.
It's about the southeast Eighth Avenue.
I don't. My name is Willie Rosetta Graham Bracy, five-oh-one Northwest First Terrace. And I'm concerned because every time it rains, light rain or heavy rain, that sewer right there, right there by my house, right sitting in front of my house, it floods. And I starts calling the city to let them know that they need to go clip pump it out before storm come, when I look at the news. But they don't come and pump it up because they'll say, yeah, but I goes out there and look at, look at it, and I see it's not pumped out. And I'm concerned because the boats, when they come by, they just shoot all the water, all the debris in my yard. And I can't clean it up anymore. And I don't have nobody to clean it up. But the, and why is they letting people build houses right down, right across the street and know it's going to be floods? And then the water, and and the water came up in my house the last time too. And when things like that come up, they need to think about evacuating the seniors before because they blocked my, blocked the road out right up by my house, and I can't get out. And that's not good.
Thank you, Mrs. Bracy. Anyone else like to speak this evening? Mr. Bennett, come on down.
Brian Bennett, six-fifty Southwest Fourteenth Place. I am the current Chairman for the Planning and Zoning Board of the City of Deerfield Beach. I took over Mr. Plaut's former chair. So good to see you again, I guess this is where you disappeared to. Um, I expected to come here tonight because many of the issues that come to you come to me first. So I thought I was going to stand here with all my knowledge of the issues that you guys are going to vote on. And surprise, surprise, I'm hearing about a flood that I have no idea even happened. And I'm in this, I live in this city also. The southeast Eighth Avenue flood, wow. Um, I would like to say a few things about it. First, let's not beat up Mr. Eric Powers. This is not his fault. From what I know about Eric Powers, now that he knows that there is a problem, it will get fixed. I've known him for a few years now, he's that type of person. I love what I heard from Mr. Ben Preston. I go to sleep on all of the other, I snooze, I don't know what y'all are talking about. Let's get jumped to the end and show me how we're going to fix it. Okay, now, now I'm awake. What's the solution to this? We don't have to actually, this isn't hard. We're we're not the first city to go through a flood. There are other cities in Broward County who flood worse than us. Anybody ever been to downtown Fort Lauderdale? It, this is not a new problem. All we have to do is now that we know that there is a problem, talk to our other cities and fix it. One of the things I loved about Mr. Shnitzky, even though he went to Boca, is that he's trying. I love somebody who thinks outside of the box, that's a beautiful thing. I don't know if it'll help, I don't know what this the solution is. But I do know that I want a commissioner who's actually trying to find a solution, that's good. So to all of you and a lot of familiar faces I see, good to see you again. Uh, I support whatever you're doing because I know from a character point of view that all of you are actually trying. None of you are just here for show, and I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Which one of you speaking?
Not sure yet. Hi, Dorian Duff, uh, five-hundred Southeast Eighth Avenue. Um, I also just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Preston, for what you said, I think your words are very good. Um, also this gentleman, yeah, commendable as well. Um, just wanted to throw out some solutions that have been kicking around in my mind, uh, as a resident of the block. Um, I really think the the main solution now at this point is probably buying out the block for the city and turning it into a memorial park of some sort and making it like some sort of learning educational thing. Uh, that or probably for about the same price of, say, half million a house or, you know, whatever the median going rate is these days. Uh, raise them all on stilts, I mean, it's definitely doable and possible. You see it done in the Keys and other areas. So just wanted to say those things, I mean, I appreciate you saying that our voices should be the input because we have been through it. And, yeah, I think, uh, more than some dams you can buy online are going to do it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duff, appreciate that. Yes, sir, Madam Clerk, is anyone online? Okay, thank you.
Yes, my name's David Evanowski, five-fourteen Southeast Seventh Avenue. A couple of things come to mind, and I haven't read the engineering report, but, uh, I just don't understand why the waters is diverted from the ball field on Sixth Avenue, comes into our neighborhood, goes across federal highway, down all the way to Little Harbor? That's my understanding? That's where the water is exhausted. Why don't they take a pipe and run it all the way down Sixth Avenue? Pioneer Park, straight shot? And drain that water? Don't mix it in with all the, all the water that's flowing from the neighbors to our east? That's backing up the system. I'm not an engineer, but common sense, why don't you just run it all the way down? Another thing, um, comes to mind, you know, we do have a CERT team, Community Emergency Response Team in Deerfield. It's managed by the Sheriff's Department. You know, they can't self-deploy. That has to go from somewhere down in Broward County to someone's desk and say, oh, we have an emergency in Deerfield. In the meantime, you guys are getting calls, don't know how, don't know what to do or can't do anything. Integrate with the CERT team, Broward Sheriff's Office, whatever you can do, and use that resource. That team went over to the West Coast, went over to Bradenton to help. We didn't have a hurricane here, but they went. All right, so you guys respectfully need to take a look at that resource that we have and make it bigger for events like this. You know, if we had a a CERT team member with a cone and a flashlight at the end of, uh, Fifth Court, we wouldn't have been waked by every car that came speeding through there. And that's all it would have taken. Not a lot of money, just use it as a resource. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public that would like to speak? The Commission Chamber, anyone online, Madam Clerk, last chance. We're going to close the public hearing, uh, Vice Mayor Preston, would you like to speak again?
Yes, I would. Um, I think Mr. Freitag, uh, might have, uh, hit it on the head uh, along with something that I was saying, make the area lower. And this gentleman that just spoke, um, that's kind of like what you have to do. The one option that Mr. Freitag, uh, said, why don't you dig a pit and let the water flow into it? And that's kind of a simple way of putting it, but you know what that really is, a retention pond, that's what that becomes. And if that land is available, we need to look at that. The gentleman that came up, he said, maybe you ought to consider buying out the whole block. Maybe you need to do that, as I said before, that's radical. But 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 if we did, if you did that, problem goes away. Because now you can make it lower than the lowest house that's presently sitting there now. Problem goes away. But I think we should explore the land that Mr. Freitag was talking about because that gives that water somewhere to go. And it's something that we should at least look at. And and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But whatever we do, we need to look at alleviating the problem completely. So the people in that area does not have to go through that again, it was devastating. Let me tell you, when you see the water levels, that was only one thing. But people who pay taxes to this city, having raw sewage come through their pipes is absolutely unacceptable. We can't, we just can't live like that. It doesn't matter what district, we cannot accept that. So hopefully, we can look at Mr. Freitag's, uh, proposition, I think that's a good one, thank you, sir. And this gentleman, maybe we need to look at buying out that whole area.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Shnitzky, do you want to speak again?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, last call.
Yes, thank you. I had outreach to CERT, uh, a representative from CERT, uh, about three, four weeks ago when the disaster happened. And I had also spoken to one of our fire chiefs. Um, CERT team has been not in in business for several years, but what she had said was that she can train residents that live in District One to actually volunteer. And they do things like that, they can cordon off the area. In fact, a few weeks ago in Coral Springs, when they had that airplane crash, and I had called up that CERT chief, she said, I can't meet with you now because we're on, we're boots on the ground right now. We're making sure that that area where the airplane crash crash was is being cordon off. So they are willing to train residents in District One, all ages, to be a part of CERT. That may be a solution. Uh, when I had spoken to the fire chief, he he's willing to discuss it. We actually have a CERT mobile that I think is very old. We actually have a CERT mobile that I think is very old. I was told like 28 years old. But it's old, but it could be made operable. And we actually have CERT equipment. So, this is something that I think maybe we should look into. It could help us with the next disaster. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We're going to move on to item number two tonight. But before we do, to the residents that are here, your comments have not fallen on deaf ears by any stretch of the imagination. You've heard all of my colleagues speak here tonight. Um, I will say that all of the options are on the table. Nothing is off the table. Everything, uh, is being considered, even some of the radical ones that you heard here tonight. Uh, the problem is none of us up here are engineers, uh, but we're going to get that advice. Look, we got a report five weeks, uh, after the flood. For government, that's pretty darn fast. So, we are moving, uh, uh, warp speed on this for you guys, uh, as we go forward. No stone is going to be left unturned. Uh, and some of the, uh, options that we're going to be talking about may be, uh, radical. But I think everything has to be on the table as we go forward. Sorry, Ms. Lerner, we, once it's closed, it's closed. No, 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 sorry. Once it's closed, it's closed. I have to do it for everybody if I did. So, but I'd be happy to talk to you afterwards. Uh, or you can find my number and, and email online. Be happy to talk to you offline or just leave your information with the clerk over here. But with that, uh, Mr. City Attorney, uh, item number two, please.
Item number two is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, amending Sections 2-377 Code Enforcement Citation Procedures and 2-378 Schedule of Civil Penalties of Article 6 Code Enforcement of Chapter 2, Administration of the City Code of Ordinances to establish the process and penalties for enforcement of snipe sign violations and other code violations related to temporary signs being installed in the public rights of way or on city property, providing for codification, severability, conflicts, and an effective date. Uh, this is second reading of this ordinance. Um, as I mentioned at first reading, um, for years, uh, it has been prohibited within the City of Deerfield Beach for, uh, any private entities or nonprofits, et cetera, to place snipe signs or temporary signs in the public rights of way or on public property. This ordinance does not affect those underlying regulations, but provides an additional enforcement mechanism. Um, there was some discussion and comments, uh, at the first reading of this ordinance. Those comments were taken into account, and I worked with the mayor, who's the sponsor of the ordinance. And we did make, uh, two changes to this ordinance between first and second reading. The changes are shaded in gray in the ordinance themselves, but I'll summarize them right now. The first change we made would make it clear that the, for the ability of a code enforcement officer to issue a warning without fines to first-time offenders if there are any mitigating circumstances that exist. So, for example, say that you have a private property owner and it could be a resident, it could be a business, it could be a church. They intended to put a sign which otherwise would be legal on their private property. However, they made a mistake and they put it, let's say, a foot over into the public right-of-way, onto the city property where it shouldn't be. The code officer in that particular case, hey, they've never been cited before, could have been a mistake. Sounds like mitigating circumstances can issue them a warning without a fine. The second change that we made, we just clarified the ability to contest the violations. You can request a hearing within 15 days of receiving the citation if you believe, um, that you have, um, reason to contest the violation, the determination that was made. Um, there, that was already in existing portions of our code, but it made it clear and stuck it right in the ordinance here, right in this section. So, it's clear. Um, I think there were some comments raised about, you know, people playing games with some of the messaging on the signage to get people in trouble. So, there is a mechanism to appeal. So, those are the two changes that were made between first and second reading. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. And I just wanna, again, reemphasize that this is for signs that are on public property, not private property. So, all the concerns about the, you know, the garage sales and everything else, that, that's not part of, that's not part of this and never was intended to be, uh, that we had before. So, and this is really just a mechanism to give code more teeth for enforcement. The, the, the snipe sign, underlying regulations on what is a snipe sign, where does it go, how big? Those rules have been in place forever. This doesn't change that at all. This just gives more enforcement opportunities for code because of the volume of sites, snakes, excuse me, snipe signs that we have in our city. So, with that, I see a couple of questions. We'll start. Vice Mayor, you wanna go first this time?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, um, thank you for sponsoring this. I understand the nature of, of why you did it and especially with the idea that people outside of the city, will take advantage of situations. So, this is, this is good. The, the concerns that I had, I see that the language has changed, uh, somewhat. So, now basically, wha, what we're saying is that the officer has discretionary, um, views that he can make, or he or she can make, uh, at the time that they are looking at this situation. And I think that that's good. Um, I still kinda was worried about, um, how this might affect someone that, you know, that wasn't intending to, you know, create a snipe sign situation. But this is overall good. I will support it because I think it's, 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 uh, it's better that we have this in place than not, uh, even though I still have some lingering concerns.
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. Appreciate that. Um, we'll go to Commissioner Shinsky, followed by Commissioner Plout.
Um, I was a little confused. I did do my, my homework on this. And I was told that churches and synagogues are exempt. Are they exempt from this? I thought, I was told that churches and synagogues are exempt.
I'm not sure who, who told you that, but thi, this doesn't exempt or carve out any specific private entities or nonprofits, et cetera. Um, and we don't, we shy away, we don't do selective enforcement. So, this is, if there is a snipe sign or a temporary sign in the public right-of-way, um, then it could be enforced pursuant to this mechanism.
It's, it's an excellent piece of legislation. The only feedback I can give is in terms of synagogues and churches, I feel that it's very important to get the word out, especially this time of year when it's holiday. And I know in my community, senior citizens, a lot of them are alone. They look to churches, they look to synagogues to be with people. They don't have a family. So, I think maybe some exemption may be put for churches and synagogues to be able to put these signs up to draw people. I think, um, I think it's a good thing, especially with the holiday time, something to consider.
Yeah. I mean, Mr. City Attorney, if a church or synagogue puts a sign on its private property, this, it's not an issue. That's not what we're talking about. It's if the church or synagogue inadvertently puts their sign on public property is when this comes in, into play. And that's why, uh, we put in the mitigating circumstances. Because if a church puts a sign out that it thinks is on its private property, which in actuality turns out to be public property, that gives the officer the ability, um, to tell the church, to give them a warning, say, hey, you inadvertently put this on public property, not your own private property. Uh, so, we're not going to cite you, but we're just gonna give you a warning, say, hey, just make sure you put it on your private property going, going forward.
No, but I, I understand that. I understand the difference between private and public property. What I'm saying is maybe we should make an exception for churches and synagogue, even if they put it on public property. It's, it's a, you know, a, a way of community. So, I think it's something to consider that they should be exempt, even if they put it on public property. We're a church, you know, come and, and come to our church. We're a synagogue, come. So, I, I, you know, I, I think maybe for humanitarian reasons, if that's a word, this is something that should be considered.
The, the issue, the issue, Commissioner, is if we allow public property to be used that can interfere with visibility for vehicles, pedestrians, bicycles, there, there are other impacts to it as well. Um, and, and the city attorney can certainly speak to the legal aspects of it. But the, the whole notion of, um, not having signage on public property is, um, oftentimes becomes a safety issue as well.
Yeah, and I will say, and I understand the concern that you're raising, Commissioner, um, but, um, I don't know, probably seven or eight years ago, don't quote me on the exact time, the Supreme Court, US Supreme Court issued a decision in Town of Gilbert v. Reed, Town of Gilberts in Arizona, um, that, you know, created an issue in terms of, discriminating on signage based on the messaging. You know, whether it's a commercial message or other things. So, our ability to do things like what you're talking about is somewhat limited, um, by some Supreme Court presidents. So, we gotta be careful because we don't wanna impact the constitutionality and validity of the underlying ordinance and the underlying regulations that have been in place.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Uh, Commissioner Plout?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to, uh, well, first of all, I like this a lot because there's a lot of snipe signs around. And as I mentioned in a previous meeting, they get very inventive, uh, put them up very high. And sometimes we have to send, uh, staff out with a bucket truck to get, to go up 20 or 25 feet to get a sign down, believe it or not. Um, but there's something the public might not be aware of. Um, you know, we, we have, uh, folks that have different, um, businesses that maybe they, they might have a seminar, uh, that might happen on a Saturday. Or, uh, they might have an event where they rent, uh, a city property or something. And there, there is a method in, in our code that was explained to me, uh, by Deputy, um, uh, Power that if you would have an event like that, you would be allowed if you pulled a permit, um, to put your signs out for the event. Uh, I don't know the time period. I think it's at least one day before and you have to have the signs, um, uh, specified where they're going to be, which intersections. And they have to follow the rules so that they don't, uh, impede any line of sight or anything. But, um, if someone is, is having an event that they would like to put out signs to the public, there is a way to do that by getting a permit. And they have to make sure that they pick them up, I believe, within two days. So, that's probably something good for the, for the public to know. And also, uh, what I like about this is I didn't realize, and, and so I talked to folks here at the city, that we really didn't have a way to enforce any type of penalties, uh, as Vice Mayor, uh, brought out for businesses that put signs in the public right-of-way that have their business actually in another city. Well, we didn't have an enforcement, uh, method for businesses that are outside of Deerfield Beach to enforce our code, only ones inside. And that was my understanding. So, I think that this brings everything in focus. And I congratulate you, Mayor, for, for bringing this forward. I would be totally, uh, especially with the amendments, totally in favor of it. And that's all I have to say, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. And again, um, this doesn't change any of the underlying regulations. So, the one that you brought out about getting the special permit, uh, for your event, that still stays on the books. This isn't meant to change any of that. This is only just, uh, for enforcement purposes. And especially for those businesses that are outside of the City of Deerfield Beach that are polluting, uh, our city with their, with their snipe signs. Um, Madam Clerk, did anyone sign up for item number two this evening? Okay, so we'll go to anyone inside the commission chamber that would like to speak on item number two this evening. Come on down. And is there anyone on deck online, Madam Clerk? Okay. Just name an address for the record, please.
Hi, good evening, um, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Um, Apostle Ron Harper, I am Kingdom Ministry, 432 Southwest 10th Court, Deerfield Beach. Um, I didn't know I was gonna be speaking on this, but it came up. But I can honestly say I've been a victim of the snipe signs. Because before I realized there was a, a code or, or a law in force a couple of years ago, I actually put out some signs. We were having an event at the church. And we put it out the night before because we were doing a giveaway. But when, to my surprise, the day of, all the signs were gone. So, I guess code enforcement came and they retrieved all of those signs, um, which I, I was fine with that, but I, I still wanted my signs back, but we never saw them again. So, I don't know what happened to them. So, but anyway, uh, but, uh, we were actually planning on, we're doing the event, the joy fest event. And, uh, we've actually ordered, I think, 15, um, snipe signs. Um, so, but I'm understanding now that if I, we were just gonna put them on the church's property and at, uh, Ovita Park. So, but I'm, I'm understanding now that if we pull a permit, that I'll be able to put them throughout the city. Is that correct? Or did I hear that correctly?
I, I did say that, sir. Um, because I was told by, by our, our staff that
Okay.
They were
And I just
Danger. I had, I had, I'm sorry. I mean, don't interrupt. And this shouldn't take away from a gentleman's time. But I did have somebody that was putting on an event that rented one of our city facilities and asked if she could put out signs. And, uh, and I inquired and it turned out that that was, that was exactly what I was told.
Okay. Okay. And, and I will ask that question.
Yeah, what I would, and if it's on your private property, so long as it meets the sign measurements in our code, you should be okay. Um, you do have the ability to submit for a special event permit application. I don't know about signage throughout the whole city that you would get. Um, but what I would suggest to you is that maybe you get with, um, Deputy City Manager Power or whoever he designates as you're planning this process so that you all can coordinate, you can get clear direction before you spend money or actions, time, et cetera, um, doing things that may not be permitted.
Okay. Okay. And my second thing, if my time still permits, I actually, um, reached out to, uh, a, a great city clerk concerning that same event. Um, this event that we're giving, uh, a big toy drive, and it's going very well. I wanna thank the city. Uh, BSO, everyone who's, uh, who's partnered with us, it's been, it's been a great, great event. We moved it from the church to the park. And, um, we, we also have now a, because of our, all of our expenses have pretty much tripled, uh, because it's a larger event. We have a lot more registration, a lot of kids are gonna be blessed behind that. But we do have one issue and that's the stage, um, and the, uh, lighting and the sound. So, I did put a petition in or request, uh, from the city. If there's any funding or anything or any connection that you guys may have, uh, we also would like to also celebrate the 100 year of Deerfield, uh, for this event as well. So, we were looking for the same type of setup that we had for, um, uh, for Juneteenth. So, that's my request.
Time's up, Mr. Harper. Pastor, thank you.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Power's in the back there. Just wave real quick. Mr. Power, wave. There's Mr., there's the pastor. He can get you the information on the snipe signs. Okay, anyone that would like to speak on? Mr. Harper strayed a little bit, so I was, uh, been, been full there, but we're, we're speaking on item number two only.
Yes.
Good, Mrs. Tigner.
Yes.
Just name an address for the record, please.
Yes. Janice Fullmore Tigner, 1090 Southwest 4th Terrace. First of all, I wanna thank you very much for the, the clear, the clearance, the clear up about the signs. And, um, I had spoken with the gentleman in the back, um, regarding our signs. And it was a city event as well. So, they had no reason to remove the signs off of our personal property. So, that was wrong. And, and, and I know we've talked about code enforcement time and time again, which is a lousy company that we have, unfortunately. Hopefully, one day we'll get a better company to help us out in the City of Deerfield. Um, but I just wanted to first say thank you very, very much for that approval and understanding on the signages. And that was it.
Thank you. Mrs. Bracy, you'd like to speak on item number two? Come on down. Anyone online, Madam Clerk? Okay. Mrs. Bracy, you may be, you may be the last one.
My name is Willie Rosetta Graham. I'm Bracy, 501 Northwest 1st Terrace, Deerfield Beach, Florida. Um, I have an incident that happened today. And it was a scary incident because I goes to the senior citizen place every day. And when I got back home about
This is related to the snipe signs? Otherwise, public comment is still
About 1:30.
Public comment is still coming up, but it just has to be about number, about the snipe signs.
Oh, it's about the snipe. Oh, I thought it was on number two. I, oh, you, oh.
Item number two on the snipe signs. So, what happened to you today is regarding the snipe signs?
No, it's about something that happened that, uh, I didn't, I was afraid when I got home.
I'm just gonna ask you to please wait, uh, for public comment, which is actually next. But I just gotta keep, keep it all together, if you don't mind, please.
Okay.
Pastor Williams, is he coming down for item two? Okay, perfect.
I guess Pastor Williams, 129 Northeast 6th Court. Uh, now, my question is, um, we have our church services at the women's club. So, we do put a sign out along, um, the front of the building. Is that illegal on the front of the building? Is that, um, is that the, their property or is that the city's property? It's out by the sidewalk.
I don't know exactly where you're speaking, but Mr. Power is still in the back there. So, wait, turn around and he'll wave. There he is. If you could speak to him, he can, he can help you out.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on item number two? Madam Clerk, anyone online? Okay, go ahead, State Representative, uh, Reed? Former State Representative, you on?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Gwen Clark Reed, 1430 Southwest 6th Way. I wanna know that if the church is having an event and they, the day of the event, they put out the, you know, they call them the A-Board signs on the, at the front of the church, is that going to be considered, um, to be considered illegal according to the snipe sign ordinance?
No, this ordinance doesn't change any of the A-frame sign regulations.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, former State Representative. Madam Clerk, anyone else online? Last call for anyone inside the Commission Chamber who'd like to speak on item number two. Okay, we're going to close item number two to public comment. Motion to approve. Will second. Approve item number two by Commissioner Hudak, seconded by Vice Mayor Preston. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Plout?
Yes.
Commissioner Shonitzki?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Preston?
Yes.
Mayor Drowsky?
Yes. Mr. City Attorney, we're on to the.
Public comment.
Public comment.
Persons addressed in the commission shall state his or her name and address and may speak for three minutes. This is the time for public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. The time for public comment on items that are on tonight's agenda is after the title is read into the record and the mayor opens the public comment portion for that item. As a reminder, no comment shall be made related to the personal life or personal qualities of any person, and no language which would offend persons of ordinary sensibilities shall be permitted.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Mrs. Bracy, we're going to give you, if that's okay, Mr. Freitag, we're going to, Mrs. Bracy, go first. But you'll be second.
My name is Willie Rosetta Graham. Bracy, 501 Northwest 1st Terrace. First thing I want to talk about today, I got back home about 1:30 and a police was sitting across in front of my driveway. I was coming down the road and I could see the police in front of my driveway. And I know nobody is not there. And I was wondering why he was there. So I asked him, he, no, I didn't ask him. He, I, I had to put my signal on so I could get in my driveway. So he pull up and I had to pull, I had another car in the yard. So I had to like pull kind of run it to get in there. So I asked him, is it anything I supposed to know? And he said, no. So I said, well, why are you parked across in front of my driveway? And so people told me he was there ever since about 12 o'clock, about an hour and 45 minutes. And I looked at it on my ring, so it was. But when you're doing a driveway, that's supposed to be parking in front of somebody's driveway, that's just like a handicap thing. Because you don't park in a handicap space without getting a citation. So I don't think nobody should be blocking a private driveway, not a policeman, unless they're coming to tell me something. And he, and he, he pulled up a little bit and he still stayed there. So I say, well, I said, I don't want you here. I said, why don't you go in park at the park? I said, because my neighbors, they're going to think something happened to me because I live alone. And they know that everybody around there know that. And so it was, it was kind of scary to me invading my property. Because that happened one time before. They had my house blocked off with yellow tape. They went to the wrong house. So they had to come down there and move the tape. And, and the dogs on the leash, they need to start putting those dogs on, on a, with a leash. They have those dogs running around and you can't go out your door sometime because you scared that they're going to run towards you. And it'd be those pit bulls. And that's not good. So, and they still, the, the traffic's still being blocked out there at Hillsborough Boulevard too. You can't get cross still. And it's school crossing guard is guiding the children cross in the morning to catch the, I meant to go to Deerfield Park Elementary. And the people still making those U-turns in front of the kids coming around. That's not good.
Captain, I take it you're taking good notes back there. Just give me a thumbs up. You can, Mrs. Bracy's right there. Yes? Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Freitag, hold on. I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that people actually signed up. So I'll take those. You'll be the first non-signed up one next. Madam Clerk, who's first, please?
Brittany Portier Downing, and then Bernie Parnas.
Okay. Sorry about that, Brittany. I hope you're okay me putting Ms. Bracy first this evening.
No, that's fine. That's fine. Good evening. My name is Brittany Portier Downing, and my address is 5281 Northeast 14th Avenue for the record. And I was invited here by Commissioner Shozet, Shozetsky, I'm sorry. So, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and members of the city of Deerfield Beach. My name is Brittany Portier Downing, and I'm honored to serve as the Vice President of Driven by Passion and Purpose Association here in the city of Deerfield Beach. I'm accompanied by my husband, Joel Downing, who is the President of Driven by Passion and Purpose Association in Deerfield Beach. And I also serve as the proud manager of education and prevention for women in distress. At Driven by Passion and Purpose, our mission is simple yet powerful, to empower youth and families through mentorship, mental health advocacy, and holistic wellness programs. Here in the city of Deerfield Beach, we see incredible potential in our young people. So through initiatives like mentorship and community engagement, we provide opportunities for them to discover their strengths, build confidence, and pursue their dreams. We believe that passion and purpose are not just words, they are tools that can transform lives. In my role at Women in Distress, I lead education and prevention throughout the state of Florida in an effort to break the cycle of domestic violence. Every day we work to ensure that individuals and families have access to resources, education, and support systems that foster safety and healing. Prevention is not just about awareness, it's about creating a culture where respect and healthy relationships thrive in the city of Deerfield Beach. Both of my roles in these organizations, they, they work to empower the community. We want to build a diverse, a diversity resilient and community spirit surrounding love, support, and also providing resources that's necessary to thrive. So what we're asking, if you would like to learn about ways that you can get involved with both organizations, Women in Distress, as well as Driven by Passion and Purpose Association, you can feel free to ask me after the meeting. I will be here. And I want to thank each and every one of you guys for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening.
Great. Thank you for coming. Appreciate that. Former Commissioner Bernie Parnas is next. I believe there's a handout. So start his time after we have the, the handout. And then is anyone on deck, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Rodriguez? Julie Rodriguez.
In the front row, you'll be next.
Everybody got a copy? Not yet. Okay, so I'll wait till everybody gets a copy.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
Bernie Parnas, 3074 Harwood F, Deerfield Beach. What you have in front of you is a letter I wrote to the editor during the season. 16,000 people live there in Century Village. This is their newspaper. Last week I published a similar letter in The Pelican, which goes out throughout the whole city. I'm upset because the last time at the net, last commission, I asked the commission, how many cities out of the 31 use the BSO and how many don't? The answer's 13. 18 do not. 18 have their own police force. I wanted to find out why. Coconut Creek and Coral Springs got together and have their own. They're very happy. I spoke to a commissioner today. He said, response time, excellent. Better than we had with the BSO. The people love the cops because they're local and they're permanent. They're not here. And then two months later, they're in Oakland Park or wherever else the sheriff feels he needs them. They have control of their police chief. We used to have a guy by the name of Snackenberg, Captain Snappenberg. I had lunch with him. He says, I'm leaving tomorrow. What do you mean? I'm being transferred. The city didn't have a choice. They were given three names. They could pick one of the new chiefs. Luckily for us, we got Adam Hopstein, who happens to be excellent. But it didn't have to be that way. What upset me is the fact that a, it was pushed two meetings ago by one of the commissioners to accept the BSO. And here's what upsets me. Who hired the company, Mr. Mayor, to evaluate the money that it would cost either way? We're paying them 70 some odd thousand dollars. I, I'm sure you're aware of it. Was it the commission that hired it or the city manager?
Commissioner, you know this isn't a back and forth during public.
Okay. Well, the prime, the problem I have is this. I went to all the meetings that this gentleman held. Very few commissioners showed up, but not important. His answer to me was, oh, we won't have any figures at all until mid or the end of December. How can we vote or you vote which way we should go if you don't have the figures? How many of you have talked to mayors of other cities? Can I have one more minute?
No, sir. There's no.
No?
No minute. Time, time's up, but thank you.
I'm very upset with the commission.
Ms. Rodriguez, you're next. Go ahead.
Yes, hi.
Madam Clerk, did anyone else sign up? Okay.
You told me I was not.
Mr. Freitag, you'll be after Ms. Rodriguez, I promise. Good.
Hi, my name is Julie Rodriguez. I live in Deerfield Beach. My address is 150 Southeast 7th Street. The reason why I'm here is I live on 7th Street between 2nd Avenue and 1st Way. Ever since we put those beautiful lights on 2nd Avenue, which I love, our one little street, the two post signs, the pole lights are out. I checked to see if there was a number on there, FPNL number, pole number, and there's no number. So I want to find out why those lights are out. It's very dangerous. All my neighbors are walking their dogs. It's only one short little block, but it's very, very dark. So I just want to know, who do I just, the commissioner? I tried to look to see if there was FPNL issue, but it's not. So leave it in your hands. Thank you.
Do not walk away. Turn around.
And.
See Mr. Power waving his hand.
Okay.
In the back, right? Go, go see. Have you talked to him before? Just get us the, get us the address. We'll, we'll address it. Okay, thank you. Mr. Freitag, you're next.
Good evening, Roger Freitag, 418 Southeast 2nd Street, Deerfield Beach, Florida. Before I read a statement that I prepared for this evening's meeting, I'd just like to say how disappointed I am with the city manager and the city of Deerfield Beach. It's my understanding that those families that were flooded on the Southeast 8th Avenue area, none of them have received any helpful funds from the city. You may remember on the meeting that we had the Monday after the Sunday flooding issue, I had made it very, very aware. Everyone was made very, very aware. I didn't suffer, but I live extremely close to these people. I'm not even a quarter mile away, perhaps even less than that. I also recommended the city that all drainage projects should stop at this point in time, and we should be helping these people out. And I find it very difficult to believe that this hasn't happened in our city. It's disgraceful. Let's move on to the written statement. Fire rescue. In the ongoing negotiations between the city of Deerfield Beach and BSO, the fire contract is being overlooked regarding possible cost savings. Every potential cost saving measure should be analyzed and discussed with BSO. One such potential savings is reducing the staffing on an EMS ambulance from three to two employees. Recently, the city of Delray Beach did just that. I'm curious, did our city manager call up Delray Beach and speak to his counterpart regarding what the city's experiences have been since cutting EMS ambulances from three employees to two? I'm not saying that this is the direction we should go in Deerfield Beach, but why has it not even been discussed? We have a director of safety. Did he bother to call Delray Beach and find out what their experience has been? Mr. Bremlow and Mr. Gladio are paid a significant amount of money. The least that they could do is to look into every possible cost savings. Remember, gentlemen, it's not your money, it's the taxpayers' money. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Freitag. Pardon me, anyone else in the Commission Chamber that would like to speak on public comment this evening? Madam Clerk, is anyone online? Katie Freitag online. You're next, please? Mr. Freitag, please unmute. Good, Mrs. Freitag, we're waiting. Can you tell if she's trying or? She was, she's the last one. Once we close, we're moving on, so. All right, so we're going to come back to Katie Freitag while she tries to figure out her volume. And then Jonathan Ungian is next, and then we'll go back. Mrs. Freitag, go ahead, Mr. Ungian.
Hello, Jonathan Ungian, 1938 Northeast 6th Street. I would like to discuss the, the BSO concern and issue. He told me that the Internal Affairs investigation, when I was strong arm robbed by two BSO members, would be expedited and given to somebody else that they recommended. Going on six weeks, I've heard. Giovanni and other people from BSO discussing accountability and, you know, integrity and all these things. However, there doesn't seem to be any that I see. We're now almost four months out. I can't get body cam footage. I can't get reports. I can't get anything because this is in Internal Affairs. It's a total disgrace. If this was in-house, I don't think we would have these issues. I didn't, and I've stayed quiet in terms of whether we go in-house versus BSO. And accountability isn't there when we have the break house. I know a number of council members I had reached out to regarding the private parties held for a week while they kept barricaded the area of the sidewalk, the boardwalk. I would like to point out that there are tables that are blocking almost half of the boardwalk. I'm confused why there are tables on the beach side of the boardwalk where there used to be benches that I could sit and did sit with my daughter. So it's great to see that it's finally opened. However, like I said, I have just questions why this establishment is allowed to have tables outside of their patio. And they're not very inviting for people to sit in. They sit empty. And those benches should be returned. And lastly, as we're approaching January 1st, I would again like to advocate for the fact that sightseeing by residents who paid for the repairs of the pier, that there's no charge for residents to go out for a few minutes, not to fish, but just to sit on the pier that we paid for that was shut down for years.
Thank you, Mr. Ungian.
Thank you.
Welcome. Time is up. Madam Clerk, were we able to get Mrs. Freitag back? Give it a shot. Mrs. Freitag? Can you tell if she's unmuted? Just a couple more seconds. Well, we, we gave it a shot. Just ask her to, Madam Clerk, if you can just privately chat your email to her, and then she can send, as, as we do at prior meetings, she can send you the comments, and then you can distribute it to us. Okay. Mrs. Freitag, go ahead and email your comments to the clerk, and then she'll distribute it to all five of us up here on the commission. With that, we're going to close the public comment for this evening. Mr. City Attorney, we're on the consent agenda, items three through 10.
You said it, Mayor. We're on consent, items three through 10.
Are there any? Are there any, uh, polls or comments from my colleagues?
I'd like to make a comment on three.
Uh, just three or?
Uh, just three.
Um, okay, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Did my homework. I did my housework, my yard work, and my schoolwork. So I met with the city manager. I like this. I had, uh, in the backup, it says the city will be getting over a million dollars from Hillsborough. But in speaking to the city attorney as well as the city manager, they said this million dollars takes in consideration the raised prices from BSO. Also, if we do go with our own city police and fire department, it would also be factored in as well. So that's good that, you know, prices are going up. And even though we're taking this responsibility for Hillsborough, they're accommodating the city by raising the prices as well, both if we stay with BSO or we go our own police and fire. So I'm very agreeable to that.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, I don't see any other lights. So is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on items three through 10? Anyone in the commission chamber? Madam Clerk, did anyone sign up? Anyone online? We will close the public hearing to items three through 10. Commission?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Uh, you threw me off there, Commissioner. Uh, motion to approve by Vice Mayor Preston, seconded by Commissioner Shinetzky. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Plout?
Yes.
Commissioner Shinetzky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Preston?
Yes.
Mayor Droski.
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen. We are up to, uh, comments by administration and legal?
Comments, uh, nothing from legal tonight. Anything from, nothing from the city manager. Comments by mayor and city commission.
As custom, we'll start with District 1, Commissioner Hudak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, the only comment is, um, last week, I, myself and a couple of colleagues actually visited, um, Salt Lake City, Utah for the National League of Cities event. Um, one of the most exciting trips, um, or aspects of the trip was, um, our, I guess you'd call it a, uh, field trip. Uh, they took us out to their, um, Olympic, uh, village. Uh, and, and just talked about how, you know, most Olympic villages, they're open during the Olympics and then they close. Um, they had a plan of action before they hosted the Olympics in 2002 uh, to put funds aside to keep this event open, where the village opened. Um, and they turned it into a, um, a training center for future Olympic athletes. Uh, 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 a site so that, um, youth can go and learn how, uh, all of these, these different, uh, winter sports that they have, and also for, for residents to go out and enjoy the park. And, and I just thought it was a tremendous, you know, opportunity that they put forth. Um, they've done so well. In fact, I believe they are the most profitable Winter Olympics in history and the fourth most profitable Olympic ever. Um, and they actually have won the, uh, the bid again for, uh, 2034. So now they're starting to ramp up for that. But I just, just thought it was really, really exciting just to see how this city has really turned their identity, uh, using this new event. And, you know, I, I think that's something that, you know, we talked about and just, you know, what we can do here at Deerfield Beach. We've got a lot of assets, um, that I think we should be able to take advantage of. Um, so it was just, it was, it was really, really exciting to see, and that's all I wanted to mention. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, District 3, Commissioner Shinetzky.
Sure. District 3 is in good shape as we, as we're ending this year. In Century Village East, concerning the main gate, after a three-year odyssey, which should have been, I think, done in a year and a half, half of that time, we finally in late April, May, got a permit to start work on the main gate. Finally, what's happening is it's down to the final inspections that the contractor has to call into the city. So now the ball is in the contractor's court. When the contractor does the final inspections and calls it into the city for them to approve or disapprove, then the main gate will be ready to open. Hopefully, we're looking at the later part of December. So, uh, we're on top of that. Um, a big issue in Century Village, I went to the last master management meeting, they put a wall, uh, they had a fence before in Hillsborough, they put a wall on Hillsborough, beautiful wall. People are very happy because it soundproofs, it protects, and it also stops the traffic light, except for the Durham area. Now, the Durham area, when I went campaigning last year, 26 buildings in the Durham area, and me and Todd, we hit all 26 buildings. So it was a lot of buildings. So in that area, they didn't put a wall in that area. They kept it as a fence because there's a lake. And they felt, well, we don't need to put a wall because there's a lake. Who's going to cross over into the lake? In fact, there are actually alligators in the lake. There was a fatality last year. Somebody wanted to take a shortcut, went into the lake, and unfortunately, he was killed. So they had this fence. Unfortunately, what's happening in Durham is now the lights from the traffic on Hillsborough are coming into Durham. And when I went to the last master management, uh, meeting where Joe Cummings was there as well, um, people were complaining that lights are shining through from Durham. So they had an area meeting that I went to last week, and Val Smirckel, who's the director of master management, went to the area meeting, and, you know, there's a lot of complaints from the residents because of the lights, the noise. You know, they need to put up something. So Val said the alternatives, and maybe to put a, uh, like a heavy tennis mat. You know, in, in tennis courts, they have this heavy tennis match, and it stops a lot of the noise. It blocks the light. So that's something that he may work on temporarily, as well as to put some sort of wall up there. Um, the budget is out for this year and next year, but maybe for the year after, or he'll maybe able to move funding for, say, Newport sidewalks, put that towards a wall in Durham. So he's working on that, and by the end of the month, we should have a solution. So I'm very, very happy about that. Um, also, this Friday, Century Village, and I'm very proud of this because I really fought for it. Uh, we're going to have a farmer's market in Century Village. This is the first time in a 50-year history in Century Village that we'll be having a farmer's market. It's never been done before. And I pushed for it because when we did the ordinance to have the, the two markets in the cove and across the street from Century Village, it's done on Saturdays. There's a large proportion of Century Village residents that celebrate the Sabbath. And they can't shop on Saturdays, which is when they have both markets. So I pushed for the market to come in Century Village, to have it on a Friday morning so that residents could use that. So we're actually having a ribbon cutting this Friday at nine o'clock in Century Village, right by the main parking lot for a farmer's market. And I've been working with Send Club and also resident Sheila Pescar to try to get vendors. It's going to be the first Friday of the month and the third Friday of the month. So we're very excited about that, this farmer's market in Century Village. Um, in terms of Crystal Lake, I've been working very diligently with the Crystal Lake HOA president, Greg Murray, and he wants to beautify the recreation center. He's putting in new windows. He's putting in new fences. He's putting in new equipment and mirrors in the gym. He's trying to really update uh, that recreation building, which is also used as a ballroom. It could be rented out as a ballroom. So he's very proud about that. Also, I want to give kudos to the city. Again, they're working right now on the sidewalk. I rode by Sunday. They're putting in a beautiful sidewalk on Northwest 18th Avenue, right by Green Road. So that this way, when the, the children are dropped off or brought, instead of being on the street or the, the grass, they could be on the sidewalk. So it's actually being built right now. And also like a, a traffic mat slowdown area, because there's a lot of traffic that go very fast around the Crystal Lake area. So this will slow them up. So again, I want to say thank you to Eric Powers, and thank you to the city manager for making this possible, and they're very happy as well. Also, it's towards the end of the Northwest 45th Street Stormwater Project. It's been successful so far. We've had a few rains since then, since then, and it's holding up. They're finishing up the project, putting back the sod, et cetera. So, you know, they're very pleased about that project as well. In the Meadows, on December 8th, invite, I invited the new Broward mayor, county mayor Mark Bogan. He was sworn in on, on November 18th to be the new Broward County mayor. He's going to be speaking at the Meadows. So we're very honored about that. And I also brought Broward Hospital. They're going to be talking about their new facility that they're going to have on Sample Road. So they're going to be speaking on December 8th at the Meadows. I'm also very proud. One good thing that came out of the BSO consultant town halls. Uh, when I was campaigning, the San Piper Point area, which is right adjacent to Century Village, it used to be part of Century Village, and then it became its own community. During my campaign, I was trying to outreach to their 200-plus townhomes in San Piper Point, right on Military. And I sent out emails. I, I made phone calls. I couldn't reach anybody. I sent out literature. Nobody. I went to the town hall at the BSO consultant, one of the town halls, and I'm talking to, to some people, and was a resident. He goes, I live in San Piper Point, and he's on HOA. So I was invited to speak at their HOA. So I'm very proud. I'll be able to represent and hear what they have to say, my constituents in San Piper Point. I also outreach the Meadow Ridge community. I'll be speaking at their HOA as well. So I'll be updating on those two communities as well. I'm very, very proud about that. I also want to say that on, uh, November, November 22nd, Thanksgiving, uh, pre-Thanksgiving in District 2, the American Legion Post 286, me and Ben, uh, Preston, we gave out Thanksgiving food to residents from District 2. They came. And I think Ben was doing the punch, and I was, uh, giving out biscuits and turkey. So we made a good team, and we were giving out to residents. They really enjoyed the meal. So I was very proud to do that. Uh, it made me feel really, really good. Um, at the last meeting, we had a resident here that was saying, you know, when there's potholes, when there's flooding, when there's graffiti, vandalism, there's really no access to, uh, notify the city. I know Boca Raton has a website called Click, Click and Fix It, as well as Fort Lauderdale. And Century Village has a website as well. If there's a pothole, you go on the website, you take a picture, and it's addressed, and they take care of it. So I think that's something we should strongly look into. I met with the city manager, and he's aware of it. Um, he had said that he doesn't want to be overwhelmed, which I could understand. But I think it's very, very necessary. It would really streamline. Uh, you would be able to submit a report with a description and a photo and the specific location. You could track the status of that report, and basically, it's, there's a digital record. So that's something, a click and fix it, that we should look at. Uh, the city manager said that we have WebCity, which is great, but I don't know if they have a photo capacity. So I really feel that Click and Fix It is something that we really need to look into. I think it would take a lot of time. People usually come up here and talk about a pothole or a light out. This way, they could, uh, go through Click and Fix It. So I think that's something we should strongly look into. Another thing that I want to bring up, that's really, really going to affect this city, and I'm sure people have been looking at it in the newspaper, property taxes. Right now, what's happening is our governor DeSantis, let, next year is his last year. He wants to go out with a bang. And he wants to do something for the citizens of Florida, you know, to do away with property taxes, which is a wonderful idea. I mean, I could understand that, but it's really going to affect the cities. In fact, with Deerfield Beach, studies have said that we would lose about $18 million in revenue. That's 24% of our revenue would be cut. That means things like fixing, you know, the street or senior centers would be directly affected. And we have to compensate. It would really throw off the balance. So I had spoken to the city manager about it, and he's also worried. So I'd like maybe in the near future for the city manager, could make us aware of what's going on. I know it's in the House. It's also going to go to the Senate. Hopefully, it'll be stopped at the Senate. If not, and it goes to the governor's desk, it may be brought to the governor to sign in summertime and then brought to the voters. But we really need to educate the voters, because, yeah, it's a great proposition. I don't like paying property tax, but I also care about the city. I don't want our services to be affected. So I think that's something that we should really, really look into. Uh, so, you know, I just wanted to bring that up, and, um, I, I, I just want to say one thing. The literature that was given out by the prior commissioner, I think it was a little confused because in the literature, he's saying that I voted to accept BSO's offer. That's not true. And that's misinformation. What I accepted was when Ben Preston put out, at least to make an offer.
Let's not make, no, 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 I'm just saying, let's not make it personal up here, please.
Personal, but misinformation. I just want to clarify. What I asked was to put an offer out there to maybe extend two years so that we can get the studies back. We can get figures. We can get information. I'm not accepting anything. I'm still open whether we go BSO, whether we go our own police and fire. I'll put it on record. I am still open, but I want information so that the public could be aware of this. So I want to set the facts straight. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Plout, District 4.
Thank you, Mayor. I really, really, uh, enjoyed being with you guys, with the mayor, with Commissioner Hudak, and our city manager Brimlow in Utah. And I would like to congratulate the city for having the vision to be involved with the Broward League of Cities, the Florida League of Cities, and, and the National League of Cities. I think the most valuable thing that I got out of this and, and, um, uh, i- it's just the fact that when, when you're in a group of other elected officials, you, uh, really, you know, you make some bonds, you learn a lot of things. Of course, the, the meetings are, are very informative. Mostly, the Florida League of Cities, I've, I've learned the, the most from attending those meetings. But, um, it's, it's just great to be in an environment away from your city where you can interact with other people, other elected officials. Um, it, it really, it really makes a big difference. I know it costs a few dollars for the city to do that, but I'm glad that they're involved in, in all three of those. Um, in fact, tomorrow, I'm leaving for Orlando uh, so that I can be on what my colleague was just talking about, the third of three uh, committee meetings for the Tax and Finance Committee. So, uh, what that is, and I've explained it before, is the property tax elimination idea by, uh, DeSantis, uh, Governor DeSantis. We actually met already twice to decide how to formulate um, a direction for the Florida League of Cities to, uh, present, um, our views, uh, how we feel about it, uh, how it affects the cities. Uh, there's actually five committees. The one that I'm on, uh, there's about, I'd say about 60 people in the room. Everybody got a chance to say how eliminating property tax would affect their city. And it's just astounding to hear that there's a lot of cities that would absolutely go out of existence. And not just smaller ones, but some larger ones, too. And the reason is, um, of course, eliminating the property tax, if you have a city that does not have a lot of commercial, uh, buildings, um, and it's mostly residential buildings, they don't, they won't even have the money to pay any city staff. They already don't have, uh, a city hall like this. There's a lot of, uh, smaller cities that they meet in a community center. They're, they're almost like homeowners associations, but they're incorporated as either cities, towns, um, or, uh, uh, townships. And, and, and they have the right to determine their own future, not to, not to have their actual city, uh, taken away from them or have to merge with someone else. Other cities say that they're going to have to cut their events. You know, this Saturday, we have, uh, the Ocean Way Holiday. And I really want to make sure that people sign up for Buckey Graham so they can see all the wonderful events the city puts on all the time. Those events will be affected. We might not be able to have some of those events. Some other cities wouldn't have any of those events. So they have to make serious decisions about fire and police. And as an elected official, I can tell you, the first thing that, that I learned is that public safety is job number one. Public safety with fire, with emergency rescue, with police, with water, uh, safe water. So these things are very important. So i- it's very distressing that this is coming out. And the Florida League of Cities has been around since 1922, and people don't understand, you know, well, what is it? Do they just get everybody together and they talk and get to know each other? They're actually a lobbying group that will take our concerns and take this meeting. When I go to this meeting, uh, tomorrow, and I'm there on, on Thursday morning, we're going to meet for two hours, and the attorneys and the people with the Florida League of Cities have put together an, an exact statement that's been crafted that will an, an exact statement that's been crafted that will now be in a lobbying situation where they will go to Tallahassee and they will say, these are the cities we heard from, these are the elected officials we heard from, this is how it's going to affect them, this is why it's a bad idea. So it's a very important organization. And once again, I have to thank the city for having us be involved in these type of things. I have been giving some reports about how this is affected, but on our next meeting on, on the 16th, I'll wrap it up and we just have to sit back. One of the distressing things that I learned about is it did pass through the House and it will be more than likely on the ballot. There probably won't be a lot of resistance in the Senate, but the way they want to put it on the ballot is just so strange because there's, there's seven ways that you can look about, look at eliminating property taxes. And I'm not going to go all through them, but the one that comes to mind that, that would make some kind of sense if we could make up the money in another place would be over 65, homesteaded property, eliminate, eliminate their taxes. Now, they're still going to get a tax bill because you, you, you know, the law does say that you can't take from police and fire, or you can't take from education. So you're, you're losing a, a smaller part of, of the bill. But that's just one, and there's seven other proposals that could go on the ballot. And their thought process is, okay, let the people decide, let them make the decision, what's the best way to go about this? Well, you know how it is when you're, when you're in the election booth and, and before you get there, you see things on, on television, they say, vote against Proposition One, and this is why. And you watch that commercial and it's, and you think, yeah, I'm not going to vote for that. And then you watch the next commercial that said, Proposition One will change your life, it's the best thing you should do. And you go, yeah, maybe I should vote for that. Well, now you're in the voting booth and there's seven or eight different things that you're supposed to pick. So I, I don't understand how that works. And, and also, it's going to have to be put on the ballot as a constitutional amendment, which I do believe has to get a 60% to pass, to pass, not a 50/50. So there's a lot of people that say, this is just a lot of political movement and nothing's going to happen. So the best case scenario would be, I think, for that to happen because it would be a terrible thing if we have to figure out how to get money. One of the biggest, and I'll end with this, one of the biggest comments I heard about it was if, if a city township has to find that money, you know where they're going to find it? They're going to have to invent local taxes that are going to hurt the renters, the non-property owners, the people that are trying to get a, a leg up, right? I mean, they have to get it from somewhere. So this is a bad idea, we're 100% against it, and that's the message that the Florida League of Cities will take to the legislature next month. So with that, Mayor, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to the people.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor Preston, District Two.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope everyone had a wonderful and safe holiday Thanksgiving. I'm still eating leftovers. So I'm sure that's kind of a staple of everybody, leftovers are always good, day after. I would just like to say, Mayor, that, and to the public, that we partner with Community Cares and they're doing a fantastic job in a lot of ways. There is presently a project over at Stanley Terrace wherein they have a community garden. Fortunately, I was over, invited to the ribbon cutting by one of the commissioners, Annette Mitchell invited me over and they have a community garden there, right there at Stanley Terrace. And what's unique about this is that they're getting a lot of the kids involved to be able to do the planting and they're going to grow the food and they're going to eat it. But they're teaching kids how to, how to take responsibility and basically how to feed themselves, a wonderful project. So Joel and his wife from Community Cares is doing a good job, but in particular, Mr. Jarvis Brunson, Brunson is actually the correct pronunciation of his name, Jarvis Brunson. He's doing a good job. That was actually his brain trust that came up with that. And it's actually very well organized. They have several big tubs. They had actually a, a spokesman that was involved with farming come out and give some instruction as to how to plant some of the things that they were planting there, peppers, the lettuce and that sort of thing, but they're doing a good job over there. And the reason that that's good, a lot of people might not know, this is a very challenged area. And to get those kids pointed in the right direction is a good thing, especially as they start to get a little bit older. There's a small window for all of us. So all of the people that might object to getting involved, actually spending some money on projects, don't do it. Because that small window of saving those kids and pointing them in the, in the right direction is tiny. And if you lose them, whatever money that you didn't want to contribute, you're going to contribute because once they become a part of the penal system, you're going to pay for their dental, you're going to pay for their food, you're going to pay for their clothing, you're going to pay for their lodging. Let me tell you, it's going to be a lot more expensive the other way. So things like this is a positive and you should look to get involved. Also, as a part of the program over there is Genesis Health. They are involved, over there at Stanley Terrace, they have an office over there helping, you know, the residents with health concerns, which is very important. So very often, those that need help, you know, sometimes we ignore those people and the raindrops of injustice fall hardest on those that are disadvantaged. And so we need to pay attention to that and help as much as we can. There was something said here just not too long ago under public comment that asking the commission, how can we vote on something without having all of the information? Let me say to everybody that heard that, there has been no motion by this commission, nor has there been a vote on restoring the police department and fire department within the city of Deerfield Beach. There has not been a motion and there has been no vote. So how can we do it? We haven't done it. Okay? So please understand that, don't get confused with that. The other thing is I'd like to thank staff particularly, Mr. Eric Power. I had some calls in, in my district about Fifth Avenue, Southwest Fifth Avenue and 14th Street. And there was a sinkhole there and a lot of people were complaining. Well, what staff did was the, the city put in rock and they paved it in, I mean, put the rock down. And a lot of people were upset with that because the rocks started, the wind blew it all over the place, it didn't look so good. And they said, Commissioner, we're coming right up to the holidays. We want our, our city to look good, our area, why don't you have that paved? It will not take a long time to pave that area. I called Mr. Power, he took care of it. I don't know when they finished it, but I got calls right away. Thank you very much. Please thank staff, which I'm doing right now. And you see, that's the best way to make people in your community an ally is by listening and doing. We all sit here, we need to be better listeners, we need to do for the community what it asks us to do to lift up the community. So thank you, Mr. Power. Thank you, staff, everybody that was involved. And I also get a lot of calls on code enforcement. And, and you know, and, and that can be like a really touchy thing with things that are going on. But I will also tell you that on our staff is a person, Roy Davis, who is the go-between. He's very professional, he does a great job. I got some calls early, I see a lady here nodding her head and she, you're right, yes, yes, you see? You know why? Because he knows how to talk to people and he knows how to get things done and he's not aggressive. So we have good people. Thank you, Mr. Power, thank you very much. I got a bunch of calls of saying just thank you and ask me to thank you because of, you know, the Thanksgiving holidays and the same thing about Mr. Davis. So thank you very much for the job that you're doing in representation of our city, means a lot. You greatly appreciate it and often not appreciate it enough. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I likewise would like to wish that everyone had a happy Thanksgiving holiday. And as I heard it, we're all going to the Vice Mayor's house for leftovers, so that's, that's what I heard tonight, so. But with that, hurricane season, hurricane season concluded November 30th, so we made it through unscathed. So thankfully, that will continue the trend going forward. One of my colleagues briefly referenced it, but this Saturday, December 6th, is the Ocean Way Holiday where we light the lights officially on Ocean Way from 5:00 to 9:00. So that's always a very popular event, bring your family and your children out to that event. It's always very highly attended and a good time. Hopefully, the weather will hold out, which it's supposed to. And that's really all that I have. Our next meeting is December 16th. So I encourage everyone to come back to that meeting. Appreciate everybody spending the evening with us and listening and giving us your comments. We, we only do as good a job as the feedback that we get from you, the ones that we represent. So thank you for not only coming to the meetings, but for the emails and the telephone calls that we get. We appreciate that, to get that information to make our, our jobs better for you. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Vice Mayor Preston, second by Commissioner Plout, all in favor, signature.